All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's June 27, 2019. Kurt Wade, Councilmember Kurt Wade is going to have our prayer tonight. And then we have a gentleman who's going to be giving our pledge of allegiance. We have Austin Wilks. He's with 398 at St. Mark's. So Austin, as soon as Mr. Wade's done, if you want to come to the podium, you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our head. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for Murfreesboro. Most of all, we just thank you for our service providers. We thank you for what we're doing here in Murfreesboro. Lord, we just ask you to bless our country. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
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 All right, Austin.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Austin. As we say the pledge, I do think it's appropriate to let everyone know that we had a city employee who gave her first pledge today as an American citizen. Please help us congratulate tax and finance staff member LeAnn Bidix, who was sworn in as an American citizen today. She immigrated to the U.S. from the European country, Latvia, when she started college to play tennis for, as much as I hate to say, at Western Kentucky University. We are very proud of her. She worked at the water and sewer department and customer service and then came to the finance department. So please let her know that we're proud of her accomplishment.
Thank you, Mayor. We are.
Also, just left a few minutes ago and had the privilege to give Charlie Daniels the key to the city of Murfreesboro. Charlie is out at The Grove tonight. He and General Huber have done amazing thing at MTSU with their new veterans center. So Charlie, there's no one, I think, if you follow Charlie on Twitter, there's no one who loves this country and the veterans more than Charlie Daniels. So we're excited to be able to do that tonight and for what they're doing, not only in Murfreesboro, but for veterans all over our country. All right, we'll move and head into consent agenda.
No questions or comments. I move approval of a consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. We have ordinance 19014 zoning amendment pertaining to industrial uses, and this is through the planning department. Mr. Anthony.
Good evening, everyone. This proposed zoning ordinance revision has a couple of parts. First, if approved, this revision would modernize Chart One, which is the use chart. We've identified several uses that are repetitive, others that are obsolete, and others that should probably be confined to planned developments such as animal slaughter. The second aspect of the revision is the creation of a new industrial district, which we're calling the general industrial district. This would be situated between light industrial and heavy industrial, and it would allow most of the heavy industrial uses with a few notable exceptions. Those would include adult-oriented businesses. And then the heaviest, most intense, and in some cases, most noxious type uses, so things like paper mills, scrap yards, and chemical manufacturing would not be allowed in the general industrial district. The Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance revision at its May 1 meeting and voted to send it to you with a favorable recommendation. I would point out that after the Planning Commission made its decision, we talked with a few folks who work regularly with industrial users, and they were concerned that two uses in particular would not be permitted in the general industrial district. Those are, first, the manufacture, storage, and distribution of lumber and wood products; and, second, the manufacture, storage, and distribution of primary metal manufacturing. They have asked that you consider allowing those in general industrial. In planning staff's opinion, we can definitely work with that, and we would be perfectly fine if you did that. However, I would ask our two planning commissioners on the council probably to weigh in, as I certainly don't want to usurp the commission's authority in making a recommendation. That being said, we're happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? If you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name or address. If you will keep all questions directed to the council, you'll have three minutes if you're representing an individual and five minutes if you're representing a group. All right? Anyone wishing to speak?
I'm on my own timer because I hate being gavelled down in mid-sentence.
Well, don't let me gavel you down yet. Let me open the public hearing first.
I only... Ed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me open the public hearing first.
Timer again.
All right. I'll set mine, too. We'll see if they work together.
I need two and a half minutes.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Keith Jones, 12710B Drive, and this is probably my last appearance before the council, because I've got a lot of hobbies I'd be rather to be doing. But anyway, there was a statement made here that your study document was a living document, and I respectfully disagree. I think what is really a living document is a general plan, because when you have a general plan, it has the force of law, and as conditions change, you hold a separate public hearing and you amend it. And amendments are done to general plans all the time. Now, and I'm an outsider, but what it looks like to me is that you've got a plan, but it's been buried, basically. It has full suggestive power, but you're not using it to really guide you, at least the examples I've seen. Maybe they're examples when I haven't been here, when it applies. But my opinion, as an outsider, is that basically it's been business as usual. You're still rezoning the land next to homes as a heavy industrial, and it looks as if Kendon Keys was never here. And I did not think that Mr. Taylor had a really good reason when he gave his reason for rezoning in the last one that happened. Basically, he didn't have a planning reason. He had a sort of an economic reason. He said, "The railroad's going to put in a spur, therefore the land's too valuable for homes, and it should be rezoned." If I were a cynic, I would think that maybe for salesmanship, he put the cart before the horse, and that really the railroad said, "If you develop this as an industrial park, we'll put in a spur." But I have no idea. What I do think is that your current policy is really bankrupt. You have a planning, you have an industrial zone, you have houses right next to it, and you also, you have a church and houses in the middle of it, which is really unusual for an industrial district. Two, like when Mr. Harney was trying to sell HI, which has a lot of toxic uses in it, he proposed a whole bunch of deed restrictions, which shows the policy's a failure. And it turns out the council wouldn't enforce him. And then the last one came up, and the city planners had to come up with a whole idea of putting a whole bunch of suggestions, you know, conditions on a plat map, which shows the policy's really not working, when you have to do backflips and everything to protect homeowners from all the obnoxious uses that are attached to heavy industrial. So I'm really excited about this. I think this is a terrific thing. It's something I wanted two years ago. You have a GI zone. It's a perfect transition from homes to heavy industrial. And instead of having a buffer zone that's empty and it's not even a first-down in football, you could have a buffer zone that's a half a football field or a whole football field, because you'd have, it's a win-win for everybody. You'd have homes, you have uses in there that are productive, and so the developers are getting what they're building now, and the homeowners will be protected from kind of rezonings where all sorts of really terrible uses are attached to the land forever. And I think my time went out, so I will respect that. And I braved the storm to come here and do this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll need to consider on first reading ordinance 19014.
I guess we braved the same storm to get here to listen to him. So thank you for coming. The comment was made that we should consider lumber, storage, and was it metal manufacturing or...
Metal.
Metal manufacturing as being general. Can you give me a little better definition of what metal manufacturing is? Because is it stamping, or is it welding, or is it... What are we talking about? We're not talking about a forge or a steel manufacturing type.
No, I think steel manufacturing is a separate category. So this would be the manufacture of metal products. So that could be anything from a shed, for example, of one that we've looked at lately, to some kind of small metal object.
But we're talking about using metal in the manufacturing process. We're not really talking about manufacturing the metal.
No, no, no. Right, that's right.
Okay. I think that, at least in my interpretation and understanding, I don't...
Wait just a second, Donald.
I wouldn't find either one of those objectionable in a general, because I don't see either one of them being that loud or that intrusive to the area where it would be located. And I think that's generally what we're concerned about, is the noise or the odor or something like that that might come from a process like that. And I don't think either one of those would be found to do that. So I'm comfortable with it going into the G.
I wanted to note specifically, because some of those lumber and wood products, is that one of the one... I mean, how you phrase that, I don't know if, how deep you're going with that, because sawmills have something to do with wood, so are we... Is that inclusive in what you're talking about? How deep into that wood and lumber products analogy that you're talking about? What specifically are we talking about?
It would definitely not include sawmills. Sawmills are listed separately in the ordinance as their own line item.
And all of those scrap metal processors that are under special use permits, none of those are...
Those are also all listed as separate line items.
Okay.
Mr. Anthony, I know part of this discussion's being prompted by a broader discussion very specifically with the site we're looking at, but do you have any concerns long-term about the broad application of these two uses from being moved from heavy to general? I know general is a brand-new use, as we're classifying, as we're talking about that, but I mean, you don't have concerns about that long-term?
Personally, no. After talking with some of the folks who I know and trust, who work on recruiting industrial users and so forth, I would be perfectly comfortable with both of those things.
And I mean, basically lumber storage wouldn't be any different than what Haynes Brothers has, or 84 Lumber, or something like that. I mean, it's just storage buildings containing lumber for storage, so.
Right. But in this case, I mean, the specific case that we looked at the other, a month or so ago, I mean, that property adjacent to it has a lumber storage company.
Just 84, right?
Husky.
Or Husky. Yeah, sorry.
So does this... I mean, I know, you know, this is coming through with something that's a proposal, a plat that's on... So including this, does this... Is there anything in his application that would downgrade that from HI to GI? If, you know, we includes this, these functions, could this...
I think probably the, if this district is adopted, it would encompass at least the activities that he's discussed so far, but of course, he also has some speculative things that we don't necessarily know a whole lot about at this point.
But inclusion of what you've proposed, at least what has been discussed as his usage, it would probably bring them under the GI?
If they chose to pursue that.
If anybody has any other questions, I'm happy to make a motion for ordinance 19015 to include lumber and steel uses for the GI.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into ordinance 1915 zoning amendment pertaining to planned signage overlay zoning.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think, was that a motion to amend the ordinance, or was that a motion?
It was a motion to approve and then amend to include...
Okay.
Sorry.
All in one.
All in one. Thanks, Eric.
Mr. Holtz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The proposed change you have before you today has to do with planned sign overlays, and I have a PowerPoint I'd like to show you if we get up on the TV screens. There's two changes that we're proposing to planned sign overlay districts, which were started back in June of 2006. The ordinance was created to allow new and innovative signs on large atypical developments and to encourage design and development of higher-quality signage than is customary required. This PSO zoning overlay applies to lots of 20 acres or more, includes commercial highway, light industrial, heavy industrial, planned developments, and any developments in the GDO districts. The changes we're proposing, the first change would include GI industrial zoning, so all industrial zones could apply for a PSO. And the other change we're proposing would allow institutional group assemblies to apply for a PSO. And institutional group assembly is a place of assembly of 50 or more persons. It includes, but not limited to, recreational fields, public buildings, public or private schools, K-12 lodges, country clubs, churches, places of worship. So now, any institutional group assembly that's on 20 acres or more could apply for a PSO zoning overlay. The actual requirements of the PSO have not changed. They will still submit a planned signage booklet for approval by Planning Commission and City Council. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the PSO change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 1915.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to ordinance 1916 sign ordinance amendment pertaining to building entry signs, banners, and institutional group assembly uses. Ms. Holtz.
Yes, thank you again. The change we have before you now has to do with the actual sign ordinance itself. There's two changes that we're proposing. The first one is for pennant signs. Currently, the sign ordinance allows them to be no more than nine square feet, and they're allowed to have one pennant sign for each 50-linial foot of building frontage they have. Pennant signs are currently allowed only, allowed in all zones except residential. The change we're proposing would allow pennant signs on properties greater than 10 acres to be 15 square foot. Any pennant signs on lots less than 10 acres would remain at nine square feet. The other change would allow them on any properties used as institutional group assemblies, and those are just as we discussed, if they're on a lot of five acres or more. I got some pictures of what pennant signs look like and their sizes. These are eight and a half square foot for the one on the left, five and a half square foot for the one on the right. So those are less than a nine square feet. Then these two pictures show some that are bigger than nine square foot. One on the left is at 12. The one on the right is 11 square feet. So 15 square feet is not that big. They use these a lot to identify parking areas. So we see the bigger size to help the motoring public to know what area to park into. So the second change has to do with institutional group assemblies also. Currently, the number of signs and the size of signs is limited to what's allowed for your zoning. So if you're in a central business district, you get certain signs, certain size signs, office general, GDO, all that. What we decided to do, or proposing to do, is to pull institutional group assemblies out, and as long as they're on a five-acre lot or larger, they can have additional signage. Those additional signs would include building entry signs, which is a new type of sign, a routing sign, which is already allowed in most zones, building material signs, and development ID signs, signage that would not be permitted, outline and strip lighting, and then institutional group assemblies on lots less than five acres would be limited to whatever their property is owned. The building entry sign, as I said, is a new sign. It's a type of attached sign that's located near a primary entrance, identifies the interior uses of the building. Here's a couple of examples I provided for you. They're limited to 10 square feet, one per entrance, each primary entrance, I should add. It would just help identify at a school or church where the gymnasium may be, where the offices may be. They'll be limited to channel letters, which are low-light type signs or indirect lighting. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I think you need to hold a public hearing.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this sign ordinance amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 1916. Let me just make clear, the downtown banners, what's the effect on the banners that are downtown? Is there any...
Has no effect, no changes to those.
Just wanted to make sure. No questions, I move for approval. Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into, on motion, things to consider. We have an economic development grant at the airport that we need to receive.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, council. I am channeling Mr. Gerke this evening. He's on vacation, and so I get to steal a little valor for his hard work. He had applied for an airport economic development grant, and he was one of eight airports in Tennessee to be awarded that grant. He received, or the city will receive, a $2 million grant that will be used. And if I can get this illustration up, it's for the south terminal development of the airport. This kind of shows the improvements that are proposed, where the old Quonset hut will be removed and a new 16,000-square-foot hangar will be built. This is kind of a little bit of a rendering here to show what the proposed improvements would look like. The quick summary of the design and engineering and construction costs and construction inspection, it's around a $4 million, $90,500 project over about a 17-month period. The grant would fund $2 million of that, and the city would fund the remaining portion of that cost. And I do understand that there's a memorandum of understanding for a potential lessee for that hangar already. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
This was a lot of hard work done by Mr. Gerke. He wrote an excellent grant application to receive these funds, and I know that he and Gary and Greg and Economic Development, they are looking for additional money all the time.
I move we accept the funding. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Please let Mr. Gerke know we appreciate his hard work.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll go into Murfreesboro Municipal Airport Terminal Change Order Number One. Mr. McKnight.
Thank you, Mayor, council, for your consideration. We have a change order for the municipal airport terminal in the amount of $81,231 for correction of unstable soil in the building pad. There is project contingency money budgeted for this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Greg, when we did the geotechnical, so obviously, we couldn't drill under the foundation of the airport, which is why we've incurred this. There were some unstable soils.
That's correct.
That's what this is. And we'll pull this money from the contingency that we had to decide.
Yes, we will.
What was the total contingency amount?
$280,000.
Okay.
Five percent for the project.
Thank you.
Great question. All right, any questions?
If not, I'll make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the purchase of an aerial ladder truck. Chief Holtz.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is for, to enter a contract and approve the purchase of an aerial ladder truck. It's part of our vehicle replacement schedule within fire rescue. This truck would place a 2005 Telesqort truck that we have into reserve status, and then we would remove an older truck from fleet once we take delivery of this new truck. The contract is, I think, to be built in about 10 to 12 months. It's already budgeted in the 2019 CIP funds, full budget for it. Actually, we have, with the purchase price being what it is, we have equipment, funding left over to be able to equip the truck with the CIP funds.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, chief. All right, we'll move into any licensing?
There is. Mayor, we've got a new restaurant coming in at, excuse me, 123 Southeast Broad Street. That application still needs to finish up their building codes inspections, but the background check was in order. We also have a new restaurant at 2089 Last Castas Pike. I believe that's a brand-new building, so it's a new location. And that application has met the background check and still needs to finish up their building codes inspections as well. If you approve this tonight, we will issue that once building and codes has approved the occupancy form. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion?
Are there any questions I can answer?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we have a couple of reappointments. Ken Halliburton to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Jennifer Garland to the Historical Zoning Commission, and Kathy Jones to the Planning Commission.
So moving. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir, not tonight.
Any other business to come before the council?
Mr. Rick, can I ask one question?
Sure.
It goes back to Mr. Gore's discussion and Chad's absence related to the grant for the airport. I think it'd be good to talk about the, I think the timing is aligned between what we're doing with the new airport terminal and the grant, but to talk a little bit about the difference between those two things and the funding difference between those two things. We'd like to talk about that.
Between... Say again.
So the grant that we received for improvements and how that relates to the actual...
So the grant that we received for improvements and how that relates to the actual new construction of an airport terminal and the difference between the two, the coincidence that we're doing those?
Right, right. Well, I think the context is this, that any income that comes into the airport has to stay on the airport. So it's important that if we get a grant for the airport, it can only go to the airport, and that's the only place it can go. We have two large projects at the airport right now, is construction, the terminal, and we also have the old Quonset hut that we're taking down and building another hangar. So when we go to, and it's very typical for all airports, general aviation airports especially, that most of their development is done through grant money, either directly through the FAA, depending on the relationship, or through the state, depending on what state you're in. And here, through the Tennessee Department of Aviation, they provide the grants either from state funding or through federal funding through the FAA for development of the airport. And the premise is that it's always to promote further aviation uses, and that's why the revenue that's created there would stay there to reinvest into the airport. So that's the general context of how we fund. We can always fund airport construction ourselves, and we are, to some extent, but we're constantly looking for airport grants to help airport development.
And that was really my main point, just the fact that the grant is helping subsidizing improvements to the airport outside of what the city is funding for the replacement of the terminal cost.
Absolutely. In this case, a substantial portion of the development costs are coming through state grants for promotion of aviation, which has a large economic effect on the city, benefit to the city. I'm sorry, Mayor.
And I was gonna say, I think, part of it, I don't think we would have gotten the grant to build the new hangar without that terminal being under construction. I mean, that was part of the thing. And the funding sources with the airport changed. Two or three years ago, several people lobbied the General Assembly on fuel taxes that were sold at airports. Part of that went back to the state, which was then distributed to municipal airports to be able to pay for terminals, improvements to tarmax runways. And so that went away. Predominantly, the largest payer was FedEx for fuel. So that went away, and now most of the terminals are pay-as-you-go, or the airports are pay-as-you-go. I've yet, one thing I did want to say is that we've talked about municipal airports quite a bit, and I don't, I've yet to find a private airport that's not at some length or some way associated with a municipal government, even Nashville or those airports. I mean, it's, there's just not many out there that, at least I've found.
There's not many. There's a few in the West that'll have some developments around airports that people who own planes want to live there, where they actually can taxi into their backyard.
Yeah.
But those are private, and they generally do not get a lot of assistance, if any at all. But, you know, they're also heavily regulated and watched and things like that. I think our terminal was a big impetus in getting it. I think TDK's development out there also, I think, having that, from what I understand, the aviation department seeing all of that that's going on out there, and our plans for additional hangars out there that will accommodate some of the waiting lists that we have is helpful in them looking and seeing the activity on our airport and granting us funds to assist with that.
And I might say that the hangar and the apron extension is such an important part of the function of an airport, the operating. And we've needed this for a long time. We've needed this expansion, and it's kind of been put off. And it just, while they're not going to be simultaneous, I think April of next year is when our terminal's supposed to be through, so they're not going to come in right at the same time. But they're, it's amazing that, you know, we're going to have this on the table for the operators of our, that do service to the aircraft that are out there. And the additional apron out there makes a different, a whole different kind of culture for that operation of our airport. And that's because of Chad's kind of looking at how to piece all the puzzle together. And I might say the Airport Commission as well, because there's some real competent folks that are making those decisions and planning ahead. So, anyhow, I think it's nice that we're able to do both these at the same time or near to the same time. All right, any other business? Ron, that was a great, great point.
On a little different topic, we had a neighborhood meeting a couple nights ago over at Church Christ of Memorial, and Councilman Shacklet, Councilman Martin, and myself were there, and it was very well-attended. It's always great to see the process work of neighborhood involvement and hearing their ideas as to how they would like to see their neighborhoods develop. And so, great meeting, and thanks to everybody who came up, participated in it. And I guess this is our last meeting before July the 4th. So sports come, we'll be having fireworks out there next, is it Thursday? Yeah, next Thursday evening. And so, look forward to seeing everybody out at the fireworks display and hope you enjoy it and have a safe 4th of July.
Amen. All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.